This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. It is Thursday, October the 15th, 2009. It is now approximately 5:00 PM. As we do all meetings, we will start with invocation. That will be led by Thomas Carruga of Hosanna Assembly. Then I'd like to ask all the veterans that are here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the US flag and the Texas flag. Please rise. Thomas?
Father, we just thank you, Lord, for today and this time that we have, that, Lord, that your leaders can gather together to do the business of your county. And God, we pray for your blessing. We pray for your counsel, your wisdom, and your knowledge. And we pray this in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Our prayers. Amen. Please then. Hail the Jesus Christ of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order. Hail. On our march into the skies, the light of Jesus Christ, the test of the faith, the salvation of the people, on indivisible.
Thank you all. Welcome. Public comments. First public comment by Mr. Victor Alvarez.
I'll look at the item. It's already.
Which item is it?
Item 2A.
Okay. All right. Second is Mary Helen Flotis.
I'm here on behalf of Property Owners Who Care of South Padre Island to read aloud a resolution that they have submitted to you. Whereas the Board and members of Property Owners Who Care, South Padre Island, support the efforts of Friends of Isoblanca Park and other like-minded citizens groups to prevent Cameron County from leasing for private development any of the beach properties in Andy Bowie and/or Isoblanca Parks, and to continue to maintain these beaches for the use of the public. Further, Property Owners Who Care, in conjunction with Friends of Isoblanca, specifically protest the lease of public beach properties by Cameron County to the Laguna Magda Enhancement Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Helen. Does anyone else need to make public comment that did not or did not have the opportunity to sign? Sign up. Okay. Item 2A, Presentations and Resolutions. Item A, Presentation by Texas Association of Counties Leadership Foundation on the Streetlight Project Award.
Judge, thank you for allowing me to be here today. If we could just run the video first and we could watch that, that would be great.
That'll be fine. Thank you.
The Texas Association of Counties Leadership Foundation presents the 2009 Best Practices Awards for Innovation in County Government. Innovation awards are given to programs that increase productivity, customer service, or cost savings for the county. Welcome to the Laguna Vista Neighborhood in Cameron County, where for years residents were living in the dark.
I've been here almost 10 years. The noise wasn't safe. There were a lot of problems with my cars.
Other areas suffered from darkness as well.
This area consists of approximately 6,000 taxpayers in the area of Cameron Park. This area is outside the city limits. It's part of Cameron County. And any service that's needed in this area is supplied by the county. If you had been out here a year ago, this was pitch black. When you have a dark neighborhood, it really attracts the bad element.
County officials were determined to get residents the light they needed.
Cameron County did receive a grant for security lights, but the problem was that there was nobody to collect the streetlight bill for each of the taxpayers. We came up with a software program to include the fee in each of the tax bills that were mailed out in October. This was unique. We called several counties throughout the state of Texas. Nobody had done this.
Now, residents are thankful to the county for providing a safer neighborhood.
Back then, it was just like all dark. When you would drive down the road, it was just like dark, a dark street. You're more secure, like you have light now, so it's better than just like back then, just staying inside.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to come today and present this award. It's a great day to be an Aggie in Cameron County. I just had to say that.
We're 4-0.
I just had to say that, Judge, because I know others are represented here today, such as yourself, so I wanted to make sure you knew that there's an Aggie in the house too. We're not 4-0. The Texas Association of Counties has a Best Practices Awards. It's a very prestigious award in that there's only a limited amount of awards it's giving out annually. This year, 13 counties were recognized. Cameron County was actually recognized twice. Tonight, we are here to recognize you for a very innovative approach that, to be honest with you, to me, that is enhancing the quality of life of your residents of your county. It is important that we remember that county government is the closest government to the people. You know, the old saying is, if you call 911, who do you get? Judge, if people don't like what's going on in your county, they either see you at church, they see at your local office, they'll see you, Commissioners at Safeway, or Apple Tree, or HEB, or some location, but I promise you, their voice will be heard. That's not always the case when it's at the state or federal level, as you all well know. But this is a different issue that is before you today, and you being recognized is a tremendous and outstanding performance for others to follow in the state of Texas, not just in the state of Texas, but also across our great nation. Today, we have two people that have joined, me and they're not up here right now, but hopefully they'll join me up here in a minute. And I want to read a statement. It was the last paragraph, it was the last statement that was in the magazine that was created for the Best Practices Awards, and I quote, "This particular program was a team effort. It's not just the tax collector's office, but also the planning department, the Commissioners' Court, the county judge, our compliance officer. I'm glad we were a part of it." And that is signed by your Tax Assessor Collector, Tony Izagueti. Today, the Chief Deputy Jesse Garcia is with us. Also, Rick Camarillo is here to answer any questions. But Judge, it's an honor for me, as I have traveled throughout the state of Texas, as the immediate past president of the Texas Association of Counties, and currently sit on the Board of the National Association of Counties. Your county is unique. Y'all should be very proud. Not only when you walk in such a majestic building, Judge, this is not commonality throughout the state of Texas. A lot of times, we're meeting in Commissioners' Courts, meeting in small rooms as best they can, and y'all just have such a tremendous reflection upon the general public in providing such a great building. There are many things here in Cameron County that I admire, and I always look forward to coming back. And Judge, if you will join me up here, I would like to present you the plaque. Judge, 2009 County Best Practices Innovation Award is conveyed to Cameron County's Streetlight Project for outstanding innovation and community improvement for county government facilities, processes, and programs issued by the Texas Association of Counties Leadership Foundation. Congratulations, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Judge, Commissioners, on behalf of Mr. Seire, the county Tax Assessor Collector for Cameron County, we thank you all, we thank the association. Mr. Seire couldn't be here tonight. He had a previous engagement, but thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Jesse. Rick, do you want to say anything? Rick, 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 do you want to say anything? I think you should, since you're up here.
Well, I just wanted to say, it was, we're glad our office can, could take part of it and help out Cameron County.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Having said that, I think before we get to Mr. Alvarez, you know, this, I think Tony said it best when he said this was, this was a team effort. We couldn't have done it without the Tax Assessor's Office, because really, nobody wanted to come to the table and find the mechanism to bill the residents. Secondly, we couldn't do without the support of the Commissioners' Court, you know, for approving the project. And thirdly, the Commissioner who's not here, who spearheaded the initiation of these lights in Laguna Heights, and then it went over to Cameron Park, and they were done almost simultaneously, but it's a great deal. And we hope that, for those that are watching, that we strive to continue to make these types of improvements throughout our rural communities, because we don't have that. Counties don't have, at least Cameron doesn't have that mechanism, like we don't have a PUB, or Magic Valley, or, you know, and like other communities do. So this is, this is a good project. We hope it's the first of many, and it was a long, long time in coming. But I want to thank Tony's office, because without his help and him coming forward and doing it within a budget that was, that we could afford, and the residents that are paying for these lights can afford, this could not have happened. We're going to get another award, and I don't want to break it, on the 29th, which is something that we initiated as well, the first in the state of Texas, is outreach to the folks that are hearing impaired, principally during disasters and hurricanes. And we got an award for that, too, through, you know, through the TAC, for the initiatives that we've done over the last two years to reach out to those folks that cannot hear. As a matter of fact, the first people that heard of what we were doing with Hurricane Dean were some folks over at the university, at UTB, that were, that were hard of hearing. And I was there giving them the news about 12 hours before Dean almost made landfall. They were very appreciative, and these are people that believe they've been left out. So we were able to convince the news media to give us a part of their, of their screen during hurricanes, principally, and have somebody there on time, real time, and convey the messages as we're speaking via press conference or news. They're going to be there with the language that they understand, which is the American Sign Language. So I want to thank TAC for the recognition. And Cameron County is a special place, and many times, we do hear of all the negatives that occur, not only in Cameron, but throughout. But every once in a while, there are some bright lights, and no pun intended, but there are some bright lights, and there are some good things that happen, and those are, those are the types of things that we need to be focusing on. So I want to thank you all once again. And with that, let me open it up to Victor.
I'd like to make a couple of comments before Pastor Alvarez does.
He's going to steal your thunder now.
I'm not going to steal your thunder, I hope. I do appreciate tax recognition and selection of this project, because it is significant to our communities. It's also good that our Tax Assessor Collector was willing to do and go the extra mile to make arrangements to be able to bill for this, because without billing the people who get the benefit of it, it just really would not have worked. But also, there's some other folks that need to be recognized in this, and one of them is Representative Veronica Gonzalez, who put forth the legislation in Austin to be able to allow this to be done. Her, along with the Valley Representatives and Senators, and the others in the state that passed this a few years back, made it all possible to start with, but then it took the team, as Tony says, to get it all put together. Some of that team, as an example, Representative Renee O'Leary worked with AEP in order to get a grant to put the infrastructure in, because we didn't have the money to do that. And we appreciate his work and AEP's contribution to it. That wouldn't have happened if a fellow named Brother Albert Philip, who was at San Felipe de Jesus Church in Cameron Park, had not spent a couple of years working with the community there to get easements, to be able to do the drop lines, and to be able to put the poles in and connect the wires up. So, you know, the team goes on and on. And I know you mentioned our Planning Department, Frank Bejerrano, and Raoul, and those folks who worked alongside Brother Albert, and the rest of the folks in Cameron Park that worked toward getting this thing done, including Pastor Alvarez, and a lot of us who worked. And I know that Laguna Heights, Laguna Heights was a project that went online, as the judge said, about the same time as Cameron Park did. And it's meant a lot to the people who live in those areas. We still have a long way to go in Cameron Park, because about half of it is not serviced by AEP. So we don't have the capital investment of about $47,000 to put in the poles to provide lighting for the balance of Cameron Park. But we are working on that, and we're working to try to get that money put together, so that Tony can then bill those people for their lighting also. So we're very appreciative of it. And this also spurred another small subdivision off of 803, just up the road before you get to Highway 100, that had their infrastructure in place, but for several different reasons, the lights had been turned off for a couple of years. And I want to mention that Almito Water Supply was kind enough to take into consideration, their board members, take into consideration the billing of those customers for their lights. So now their kids can meet the school buses before it gets daylight and have lights to do it, and be dropped off where there's lights. And it's much safer in that community, too. It's a very important project, not only in Cameron County, but I think throughout Texas, more emphasis needs to be put on trying to provide lighting for everyone. So thank you for being here. I'm sorry, Pastor, if I took some of your...
Good thing that I am a pastor. I had to rewrite my sermon, because you all took the wind out of it. You then mentioned everybody I was going to mention, so I'll just change the subject a little bit. I came to thank you. And I also came to let you know that I wanted to thank everybody that had a part, everybody that you mentioned. And this is what real unity and teamwork produces. And we at Cameron Park are thankful. There's an organization in Cameron Park called UPCP, and through that nonprofit organization, we're looking to raise some money for that $47,000 that's needed, and looking to any other organization that wants to team up with it to put that money together, so we can finish the project in Cameron Park. Since I'm here, let me address the problem that the county faces. I also served four years on CDCB, and right behind us is two beautiful neighborhoods, Meadow Brook, and they have no street lighting. And that's a curve and gutter neighborhood, but because the county has no regulation to regulate street lighting, people go and build in the county and build beautiful homes, and then these people have a problem that the counties cannot facilitate street lighting for safety. And I think we need to be looking at any developer that develops in the county. He needs to put the infrastructure of street lighting in those developments, because one reason to develop that far out there is because of economic reasons of what land is worth, but the people that are buying into the homes, they don't, they don't know that. That is one of the issues. The other issue that we need to look at now, that the county needs to be looking, we need more unity within our school system, and our city, and our county communication, because I just heard there's a new school going up next to Gallegos. When that school comes in there, Dana Road, which is county road, it already has too much traffic. And I don't know how the school district manages, you know, how they're going to build that school there, but we need to be ahead of this game before we have a problem how the school's built. And now the county has a problem with the road, this is a two-lane road. So I just wanted to thank you all for the effort. I know I can count to three, and it took three votes on this commission to get it passed. I want to thank all of you that voted for it, and thank all the people that you already mentioned that had a great part, and I really, I'll tell you, the man that kept me, kept me in on the loop was Brother Albert. I have never known a man with more tenacity, with a project that was going nowhere, that was dead in the water, and then when the recognition came to come and accept the money, back then, I still remember, he calls me up and he says, "Come here." So I came, I sat down, and he said, "Go up there and accept." So a great man, Brother Albert, and everybody that had a part. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Judge. And everybody else that was mentioned already, and I'll take no more time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. But this vote on this one, I don't recall it being other than a unanimous vote on every issue that came up regarding the lighting project, and, you know, signing it to Tony and everything, so, but thank you for your, for your comments.
Judge, I would like to thank TAC for having these awards. I know that you recognize counties all over the state. I've been there, so I've seen you recognize across the state, and it gives us an opportunity to really send kudos to our employees, our staff that works so diligently to hand, to get these things done for the community, and they're not doing it for an award, they're doing it because they're public servants, and it's an example of being a public servant. I don't see Vets Salinas in the audience, but I'd like to take this opportunity. Her department does a tremendous job of outreach, and of course, it's a health department, and it's extremely important that they do that. We have a lot of partners, and I won't take time mentioning them, that help us in partnering to do the outreach for our constituents, because we have so many rural areas. And I know, Pastor, that we have a lot of challenges, but I'm proud of this court, and I'm proud of Cameron County, because yes, we recognize the challenges, and we don't just recognize them, we try to do something about them. We haven't solved all of them by any means, but at least we see that there's some progress being done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Item B, Presentation by Ms. Jennifer Catalani. Did I pronounce that right? Catalani?
Yes.
Texas Department of Family and Protective Services regarding Cameron County Special
Good evening, Judge, Commissioners. Thank you all for having me today. This is my coworker and friend, Elizabeth Sanchez. She is our Financial Exploitation Specialist for Region 11. Both her and I cover the 19 counties of Region 11. My position is a Resource and External Relations Specialist. Elder abuse, neglect, and exploitation is a, continues to be a growing problem in our state and nation. As our population of the elderly grows, and we have the Baby Boomers coming up, and therefore we expect a spike in intakes in the future. In 2008, we received 93,000 reports of elder abuse, neglect, or exploitation in the state of Texas. 1,136 of those was in Cameron County, and we confirmed on 87 of those, the workers who investigated those cases. I'm here today to talk to you specifically about the Special Task Unit. The Special Task Unit actually came out of Senate Bill 6 of the '79 Texas Legislative Session. It is mandated that counties that have a population over 250,000 have a Special Task Unit. Cameron County, of course, being one of those. There are also Special Task Unit in Hidalgo County and Nuasis County. And I'm the Stu Coordinator. It's one of the hats that I wear as part of my job, one of the many hats. So my job as Stu Coordinator is to recruit members for the Special Task Unit, for the counties that need them, and to also work with the Commissioners' Court in appointing those members, because all members must be appointed officially by Commissioners' Court. The purpose of the Special Task Unit is to staff complex cases that we are currently working on regarding adult protective services. So if a worker is having difficulty with a case, is stuck, having trouble, you know, finding resources to assist the individual and help them in getting out of that situation that they're in, the worker can refer the case to the Special Task Unit, and they will come together during our meeting and provide input for the case and what can be done. Different agencies are represented on the Special Task Unit. It is required that law enforcement representative, a mental health representative, and a legal expert be on each Special Task Unit. And then the other members can be assigned as we choose, and Commissioners' Courts, Judges, Commissioners can recommend members also. So it's not just what I recommend that the Special Task Unit has to be. There are different ways that county Commissioners' Courts have been appointing the members, and it's completely up to y'all, and I've had discussions with Judge Costas in trying to set this, you know, meeting up, because this has been a work in progress. The Cameron County Stu, and Hidalgo Stu, had actually fallen apart, and when I took over this position, I've been working ever since and trying to get them back on track. So I appreciate Judge Costas in assisting me with that. Just a couple of examples of what is done in our region. Nuasis County Commissioners' Court has each member who is interested to submit a letter of interest, a brief letter of interest, and a brief resume to the Commissioners' Court. And from there, y'all, the Commissioners' Court up there reviews and then appoints the members based on those documents. Hidalgo County does it completely different. They just chose to have me submit the list of people that I recruited, and the judge there added somebody else that he wanted, and they appointed just from that list. So it is completely up to y'all when, how that is done. And I know that during our meeting on October 1st with the Cameron Special Task Unit, I encouraged them to go ahead and send in a brief letter of interest and resume to the Commissioners' Court, and just with the, you know, foresight that that might be what we want to go with in Cameron County, so that we could get this on, the ball, the ball rolling on this, and have everybody appointed by the end of October, hopefully, or beginning of November. So do y'all have any questions for me regarding the Special Task Unit?
I think it's a great idea, and certainly it's needed, and it does need to get put in place. I served as Chairman of a nonprofit called the Cameron County Mental Health Task Force, and I'll be glad to provide some names for you of potential candidates that would serve representing mental health on that task force.
Okay. Great. And yeah, because I, right now, I only, my list is, I want to say, six members with Cameron County. I do have the required members, a legal expert, law enforcement, and a mental health professional. And then there's a couple of other people on there. So the more, the merrier.
You have the mental health professionals targeted already, or?
There is one who's actually been on the Cameron Stu since it started, so, but it doesn't necessarily mean that only one mental health professional can be on the Stu. So the more, the merrier, whoever.
Instead of him, Commissioner submitting to you, but you submit to us, he can submit to us as well, since we have to make the decision anyway, and then we'll all just get together and pick out. You know, you have to, you point out the ones that we have to have, that you've already sort of recruited.
Right.
And I imagine that with those folks, you've actually spoken to them, and they're willing to make a time commitment to do this, because some folks just, you know, want to pad the resume. But if you can do that, and Commissioner, any Commissioner here can provide names, I guess, to my office, and then from there, we can start a selection process, and of course, we're going to go to you for, you know, for guidance and input as well, if that's okay.
Oh, yes.
Or you can send it to her, that she can send it back to us anyway, so, however y'all want to do.
Yeah, and if y'all want me to, do you still want me to get all the other, all the members to submit their, a brief letter of interest and a resume?
I think if they, if they can tunnel that to you, versus sending you and to us, just to you, and then from there, you can, you know, you can weed them out, say, no, these aren't, after maybe you've gone through some kind of vetting process. Is that all right?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
And I think, yes, I agree. I think that what the judge emphasized is, and I want to mention it also, they have to have the commitment.
Right.
And that has to be upfront, and I'm sure that you have some process in place that if they miss so many meetings, or whatever, then you replace them. Am I correct?
We don't have anything, but we, just because it's a, it's a, nothing technically has been, and that manual is exactly how it is, and there aren't really any rules, but I think that it would be a good idea to establish them through however, whichever avenue I have to, because, like I said, the Cameron and Hidalgo... avenue I have to, because, like I said, the Cameron and Hidalgo Stus fell apart, and it has, it's really, it's taken, I've started this position in November, and it's taken this long, a year almost, for me to get everything back up and running, to figure out what I was supposed to do, first of all, as a new, you know, person starting this position, and then to try to get everybody together, and, you know, I'm office in Corpus Christi, so I didn't know a bunch of people in, down here, so it was quite difficult. And I've explained to everybody that I have recruited so far, that the importance of being at the meetings, and they all, each person who has been recruited has a special interest in the elderly and disabled population, they work in agencies that deal with those issues, and they are law enforcement who have a special interest in those populations, too.
Is there a minimum or maximum number?
No, sir, there's not.
So, okay, should we can have as many as nine?
Yes. The Hidalgo Stu has 13 members now. So, the more, the merrier.
So.
Yeah, as long as, you know, they, everyone needs, should have that special interest in assisting the elderly and disabled population, of course, and, you know, a passion to do so, because that's really what it's all about, and if they don't have that passion, they're not going to show up to the meetings, and, which is the issue, you know, having a commitment to the Special Task.
Now, would you ask to, to the, the board member to select the chair, and the meeting times and places?
I actually do that. As the Stu Coordinator, I coordinate all of the meetings, I set the agenda, I get the referrals from our workers, I, you know, organize all that, I present, give training to the members of the Special Task Unit, I give them training about what the Special Task Unit is, and what Adult Protective Services does, so they have a clear understanding of what we're doing, and that way, they can give more educated input into our cases, because of course, we have things that we can and cannot do.
Who would, who would have the responsibility, as far as you're concerned, or your thoughts, in setting a process so that there's consequences if they're not being active?
I think.
Because organizations or agencies will fall apart if you don't have that process.
Right.
And I think, you just mentioned some that have fallen apart, and I can almost tell you that it's because people got on there, and they, maybe they didn't understand the responsibilities, or for whatever reason. Por equis razón, you know, they, it fell apart. But I tend to think that it's the lack of that process we're discussing that will cause that.
Right. I think, and right now, we're starting out slow, I only have the Special Task Units once a quarter, and for, the meetings last about an hour and a hour and a half, so it is not that large of a time commitment, and I think that there's definitely a way that, because these people are appointed by Commissioners Court, and a lot of individuals who are recruited find that very honorable, they're, you know, they're very excited that they're going to be appointed to something officially by Commissioners Court, but I think we could work together on some sort of a, for lack of a better word, punishment for missing, you know, two meetings, because that would be two, you know, six months of time that they haven't been involved. You know, we could do something like that, and I could submit their names to y'all, and we just don't appoint them, because the term year, unless y'all specify otherwise, is one year. Now, y'all have the power of saying, "We'd rather the terms be two years," being y'all only meet quarterly, that's really, that's only four meetings in a year, so we prefer to do two years. Y'all can do that. But, so, and I could work with y'all, and we just don't reappoint them. If they miss a majority of the meetings, if they miss two meetings in a year, that's 50% of the meetings that they've missed in their first term, we just don't appoint them next year.
Well, I think, I think for the purpose of transparency, I think they should know upfront expectations.
Right.
And not wait until it happens, and then we say, "Well, you know, they're not getting reappointed." I think they need to be given the expectations of what we expect from them as far as participation.
Right. And would it work?
You might not want to wait and then meet with a committee and have them give you input, or, I don't know, it's up to you what process you're going to follow.
And would it work for you, like I had suggested, for me to inform them that if they miss two meetings?
I would think so.
They will not be reappointed?
You know, it, that, when I first came on, the, some of the boards that I appoint to, or the judge appoints to, there are a lot of folks that I did not reappoint to certain positions, because they were chronically absent from meetings, and even though the policies said, you know, a member shall be removed if you miss three meetings in a row, or whatever it is, no one was really doing it, and so, you kind of stepped on, I did, on some toes, for, you know, you've been out, you've only been, you know, you've missed four or five, five meetings in a row, and I think that's a good way to do it, but I think you do it maybe in a, in a letter to everyone that applies.
Right.
Before, I said, "This is what, this is what the, I think, Commissioner Tomayo's right, I think, these are the expectations. You know, we meet once a quarter, meetings last two hours, whatever it is, two hours, however we can call more meetings should the need arise, tell them where you're going to meet, you know, we're going to rotate from cities, you know, within the county, and also, if you miss two meetings, now, if they're an excuse, or excuse, whatever, unless we're going to be just hard, and say, you know, if you miss two meetings in a row, then you're out."
Right.
You know, just, you know, we expect your resignation.
Okay.
But let me do this tomorrow, send me an email, or whenever you get a chance, send me an email, so I have, I know I've got it somewhere, send it back, and then I will put you in contact with somebody in my office that will coordinate that, and once you get all that, I'll put you in contact with her, you do all that, and then Commissioners, any list of folks that you may want to think about, and you might want to send each Commissioner, really what, how you're recruiting, I mean, what is it that you're, you see, you mentioned a resume, you mentioned, you know, some other things, maybe send that to all the Commissioners, say, "This is what I'm asking." That way, it'll help them, you know, during their, you know, selection process as well. And then, and we can't decide on the number yet, see how many applicants we have. If we have nine applicants, and they're viable, then I wouldn't have any problem appointing nine.
Right.
You know, so let's just do that, can we do that?
Yes, we can. And all of the members that have been recruited are, you know, qualified to, you know, I approve them.
Okay.
On our side of the spectrum, and all of the members are actually, the way that they were recruited was, the names were given to me by our, some of our supervisors in Cameron County. So, they work with these people, they know them from, one of them was from the Cameron County's Mental Health Task Force, Melissa Costiano, she's one of our supervisors. So, so these are all people that we know are going to be good, because we don't want the same situation to happen again, where it falls apart. We don't have anybody, so.
All right.
Melissa's a good.
And y'all all have my cards, I put them on the, in the right pocket, so hopefully, they're still in there, they didn't fall out.
Send me an email.
On the way from Corpus here, but I'll be sending y'all emails, and if y'all have any other questions, there's all my numbers, email, feel free to contact.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
If I can go back to Item A real quick, just, do I hear motion to acknowledge that presentation?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tomayo, saying by Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item B, the one we just did, do I hear motion to acknowledge Jennifer's report?
So moved.
By Commissioner Wood, saying by Commissioner Benavides, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Let me go to, let me take a couple of items out of order, because I know some of these guys have a long drive back. Let me go to Item 4D, consideration authorization to send a formal letter to the Secretary of Veterans Affairs, Eric Shinske, asking for the construction of a Veterans Affairs Hospital in the Rio Grande Valley. David?
Judge and Commissioners, we got some information from Mr. Toto Arsa. 4D and 4E is information in the backup that you should have, and they're here today to explain a little bit further what they're going to want from y'all.
Okay. Well, let's do it on Item 4D, do we have a formal letter already, or did y'all draft one, and then we're going to just kind of flower it up, or do you want us?
We don't have a formal letter, but we have a request, or a formal letter, right.
Okay.
But we can put that together.
Let's put it together, we'll do it, that's not, that's not a problem. Do I hear motion to, you know, do y'all want to say something, because it's going to pass, I would assume, so, Dethille, you want to go ahead and just give us a?
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. You ain't running us out, are you? No, just figured you'd have a long drive. We've been going around getting support from all the county governments, and the reason we're doing this is this, because that, we have an election coming up, November 3, and for us to get some type of media coverage, we thought, you know, that you guys, I mean, not you guys, the Commissioners Court has a video, and you come out on Channel 60, I think. Hopefully, that the people in Cameron County and other, and other counties watch that program, and they can watch us making the presentation, and they can watch you in action, saying that you support this resolution, which is, the resolution is to support Proposition 8. Proposition 8, briefly, it authorizes the state of Texas to provide monies, land, and other resources for the construction and maintenance of veterans' hospitals in the state. And the reason we did that, we asked for it from our state legislature, is because the VA, the Veterans Administration, was telling us, you know, that we didn't have any support down here in Texas locally, and no other, they saw numbers. We also had to introduce another legislation, which was House Bill 86, a resolution submitted by Representative Aaron Peña, that they want only memorialized the Congress to construct a Veterans Administration Hospital in the valley. And with that, we felt that next time we go to Washington, that they will give us ammo and say, "Look, we have, we do have the support, state of Texas, the governor, all the county Commissioners are with us." In the past, we've had those letters of endorsement from, from most of our local governments, cities, and school boards and everything, but they, they didn't, they didn't count. We say they didn't count because they didn't vote in our favor. So, that's basically our first request. Now, our second request is that we have a petition going to Secretary of Veterans Affairs, Eric Chineski, and all we're saying is that we want a hospital in the Rio Grande Valley. And since one is being expanded right now in Hollington, why not make it a hospital? Why spend all that money for a medical facility that could easily be turned into a VA full fledged hospital? And it's going to need some more money, but the structure is there. It's turning out pretty good, I think they already got all the steel building, and it's starting to take shape, take form. So, we're just telling Eric Chineski, "Please, help us." The reason that is because Senator Benson has been helping us a lot, I mean.
Well, he probably is still helping us from above, okay, so.
That's right.
So, you were right, okay.
I'm sorry, Judge, Commissioners, I apologize.
He's still helping us.
He's, I had a flashback when they started talking about Cameron Park. Because who started working in Cameron Park, there was nothing there, we were getting water from the Resaca, and we knew all kinds of stuff, protest, marched, whatever, and so now I'm seeing results. Senator Corning sent a letter to President Obama.
This week?
This week, and he's reminding President Obama that he had co-sponsored our bill in the 2007 session, and when he came down here, in his campaign, he told us three times that he was going to help us. So, we're just hoping that President Obama answers that letter, and so, we are still getting more support, because all that we're doing, we're going to let people up the river know what's happening, so they know we can support, because we do need a veterans' hospital, we do, we need, we do need it. And it's been a long struggle, and we're getting tired, and sometimes we feel that it's within our grasp, and whack, if it's not stimulation, it's the health project, if it's not support, it's something else that they just push to the side. But we still come back, and as long as you support us, our local elected officials support us, you know, and as long as the veterans and the community support us, we'll continue doing it. And it's, like I said, it's been a long struggle, and we don't like to take time, the important time of our elected government down here, but sometimes we feel that we have to, and on Monday, I mean, Tuesday, no, I'm sorry, Monday, we met with the Louisiana County Commissioners Court, and they approved the resolution unanimously in the letter. On October 6th, we met with the Hidalgo County Commissioners Court, and they also approved it unanimously. So, that's two of the county governments. Our next stop is going to be up in Starr County, and we don't know yet, but we're trying to make it before the November 3rd election. So, that's basically why, why we decided to come before you, and we appreciate your time, your efforts, and hopefully, the letter goes out today or tomorrow.
Thank you. Homer?
Judge, Commissioners, you've been with us since day one, so we want to thank you for that, we want to thank you for the opportunity to listen and see all our veterans here, but Bishop Peña is behind us 100%, Bishop Peña even took our petition to the Bishops Conference in Texas, to let all the bishops of Texas unite with our effort. And our momentum is really growing, and everybody in Washington now realizes that there's another world south of San Antonio. For the longest time, Washington thought South Texas stopped in San Antonio, but with your efforts, and all the other electrofactors behind us, I think we're going to see some reality, especially for our older veterans that can no longer make the trip to San Antonio, and some of our younger vets that are coming back from Iraq who are really injured. Right now, we got 500 from the National Guard in Western, who just left last weekend, and those 500 are going to Iraq in December, and hopefully, they'll come back, but they need the facilities, so thank you.
Thank you, Homer. Do you all have a draft letter that you've been circulating that you need for us to do, or do you want us just to come up with our own? Either way's fine.
Yeah, we send you a draft letter, but I wrote it, so it's not that hot. The resolution.
I wrote this long resolution last night about 10:00.
The resolution, we got help from, from whom you?
Well, just so we know, if you have something that you've already got that you want us to just, you know, put together, that's not a problem, I think we're going to do this.
We can do that, okay.
Amelia? First of all, Judge, Commissioners, thank you for allowing us the time to come before you to discuss this such important issue, Proposition 8. One of the things that I'd like to do for the viewers also, is just give you a little background of the proposition itself, you know, there's approximately about 1.7 million veterans that reside in Texas. We, the Veterans Affairs has nine hospitals in the state of Texas, one in Amarillo, Big Springs, Bonham, Dallas, Houston, Curvale, San Antonio, Temple, and Waco. In the fiscal year of 2008, the VA reported, or recorded, that there was 51,000 inpatient visits in this nine hospitals. A lot of them, especially from San Antonio, were from the Rio Grande Valley. Veterans have sacrificed much to keep their country safe and secure, and deserve to have ready access to their benefits, including healthcare. They have earned it. Proposition 8 would encourage the VA, the United Department of Veterans Affairs, to partner with the state to make this happen. And actually, it authorizes the state to sit down and negotiate getting us a hospital down here in South Texas. A constitutional amendment would be the appropriate mechanism to ensure that the state would actually get those hospitals built. The, the, one of the things that a lot of people don't know is that there's been a lot of work put into Proposition 8, from the very beginning. We had a lot of our veterans that made trips to San Antonio, I mean, to Austin, testified before the 81st legislature, and to us, it's an opportunity that doesn't come very seldom, okay? And it's, we just got to make it work. We've got 45 days to get it out throughout the state, it's a statewide issue. This is why we applaud you for allowing us to come before you, before your viewers here in Hidalgo, I mean, in Cameron County, and the other viewers that actually see your Commissioners Court meetings, okay? The issue would be that we need to really, really get people to go out and support Proposition 8, because we expect a low turnout, there's really no, too many candidates, okay? So, there's a couple of other amendments that are related to some veteran issues, and I'm not saying, you know, they're not important, but I think when it comes down to, you know, providing acute healthcare in the valley for our valley veterans that they have earned, I think Proposition 8 is. they have earned, I think Proposition 8 is the way to go, okay? Thank you for allowing us time to be here with you.
Thank you. You know, I, I see you all and I see you all every, I mean, frequently. I remember the meetings that, that, that we used to go in Weslaco when all this started not too long ago. And I wanna commend you guys because, um, it, you know, what, one of the things that we've emphasized is try to build coalitions and partnerships. And as, Homer, we've had, and we've had these conversations many times about all the veterans groups finally, finally coming together as one voice. I know there's some disagreements every once in a while, but, you know, you have those amongst families too. Uh, but, uh, but all the veterans groups, whether it's the veterans of foreign wars or the American Legion or the, you know, the, the guys from Iraq or Iran, whatever, I mean, all the groups have come together. And that's what, and I, I, Homer, I think I saw you in Harlingen not too long ago and said, you've gotta keep that focus and don't let anyone deviate you from that course because, you know, you're gonna have that, you know, but you can, you stay on the course and stay focused. But, but you know where we stand and, uh, this Commissioner's Court has been very, very supportive of all veterans issues all the time. I don't believe we've ever said no to you. Uh, and we will continue to say yes at all times. So, having said that, do I hear a motion to, to authorize the sending of formal letter to the Secretary of Veterans Affairs?
So...
Moved by Commissioner Wood, seconded by Commissioner Tamayo. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item E, consideration authorization for the issuance of a statement in support of veterans and efforts to pass Proposition 8 on the November 3rd, 2009 ballot. We will put that, do we have to put that as an agenda item with the actual deal or just do it, this is, we support Proposition 8 today?
Correct.
We can do that.
We can get it out next week.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to support Proposition 8?
So...
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Wood.
Hold me, sir.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Godspeed. Thank you all.
Thank you. And on behalf of the veteran, uh, community, we appreciate civic leaders like yourself and the rest of the commission for all your proactive support in, in any veteran issue that we brought before you. Thank you very much and may God bless you.
Thank you, Emilio. If y'all need to step out, now's the time to do it before we get started. Y'all don't have to go.
Thank you for being here.
But I know you gotta drive back to Hidalgo. All right. Good to see you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I'll hold it up.
Take care, man.
Thank you.
We'll see y'all. Thank you.
Bye.
Good to see you. Okay, stay well. Thank you.
The king?
There are new...
I see you now, man. Adam, now let's go back to our presentations. Item C, presentation of the fourth quarter report for, for the national bridge system. Give us the gloomy news again.
Yes. Judge, Commissioners, we have a quarter of rough news for international bridges. You have the fourth quarter report in front of you. Um, starting with the Gateway Bridge, crossings at, at this bridge for the months of, um, of July, August and September were 910,681,000, 681. Uh, that was a 4% decrease over this period, the same period last year. In terms of revenue, uh, that was 1.324 million in revenues that we had with about 8% decrease over the same time period last year. The Free Trade Bridge, uh, total crossings were 163,000, uh, about a 6% decrease. And revenues were 529,000. That was a 4% decrease. And then the Veterans Bridge, at the Veterans Bridge, we had 406,206 cars crossing this quarter, which was a 16% decrease. And the revenues were 1.5, 1.5 million, a 15% decrease. Our variance for this quarter or for this year, 1.2 million.
David, I was gonna ask you, the, um, and I think you just told me that, the, the final, the final number, how much was that off from what we had, when we were talking with the budget, was one point, was a little bit less or about the same?
About the same.
I know that we were anticipating about 1.3 million less.
The decrease from this quarter to 900,000 was the Veterans Bridge, approximately...
No, but I'm talking, in, in the total bridge system, it was significantly higher, if I remember right.
It was basically what we had budgeted.
Okay. Well, you say we budgeted, I mean, when I'm talking about what we budget for the coming year is, is it, I'm trying to relate the actual loss for the final report to what we've been talking about even during the budgetary process. Did, did this come within the 1.2, 1.3 million? That's what I'm asking.
I believe it did, yes.
Okay.
So, we anticipated correctly? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Well, we anticipate, yeah, we anticipated when we go through the budgetary process, a shortfall of 1.3 million, right? I think that's what you based your, your future projection on. So, now the real number was what? Now that you've closed out? Was it, how far off the 1.3 million were we?
We might have been off, uh, maybe about 150,000.
That's what I'm thinking, okay.
I'll have to look at it.
In, in our, in our favor?
Correct.
A little bit, okay. Okay, good.
And the budgeted figures, um, I think it's about 12% less for this coming year is what we're budgeting.
Now, my thought, when you, when you budgeted the revenues for the coming year, just refresh my memory, you budgeted the, these real dollars that, that we're talking about less? You also, did you knock it off by a certain percentage? I don't remember.
I, I think we, yes, we decreased it between 10 and 12% additionally.
Okay, all right. So, you decreased it from 10 to 12% from the real number?
Yes.
That we got in this, you know, in this budget?
Right.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Do I hear a motion to acknowledge David's report?
So...
With Commissioner Tamayo, seconded by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item D, presentation update on the ongoing Cameron County drainage study.
Judge Commissioners, um, late last year, early this year, we were awarded a grant by ETA to do a countywide study. Um, the, uh, consulting firm of SB Consultants was awarded them grant and they've been working on a countywide project for us. They're gonna do an update for you today. Tom Mount with SB Consultants is here to do that.
Judge Commissioners, it's an honor to be here today and it's an honor for SB Consultants to be working with the local consultants here in Cameron County and with your staff in developing this project for the rural areas of Cameron County. Wanted to just go over tonight, uh, where we stand on the project, what the project purpose is, our advisory committee that's been established, an update of where we are and a chronology of the problem areas that have been identified, how we're approaching the study. Uh, it's a little different than, than some of the studies that have been done in the past, how we're working with the county to establish a countywide database and then coordination with other studies. The purpose of the project was to develop a drainage plan to provide the county with accurate information for a higher level of flood protection to its residents and communities and define problem areas and particularly focusing in on those problem areas that were identified as a result of the significant rainfall event that happened with Hurricane Dolly. County staff set up an advisory committee to work with us of experts from the county and adjacent and other agencies, including the staff of, you see here, David Garcia, Mr. Hinojosa, Ms. Galvan and, uh, Mr. Sanchez. The advisory committee members, in addition to the county staff, is made up of the general managers of the three large drainage districts. Sonny Philip with the city of LaFeria and Joel Saldivar of IBWC. I noticed we left one off of here. We also have Cheryl Flores with, uh, Texas Water Development Board and the local office of that is also involved in the advisory committee. Our consultants primarily are myself as the project manager, Chris Stewart, who's with me here tonight, as our planner, and Jack Brown with Brownlee Associates is our primary local consultant helping with this project. These are the tasks that are set up in the project and, and as brief, uh, input of where we are, we've received the input, we've looked at all the, we've gathered as many of the previous studies that have been done and we'll show a slide that shows a little bit of that, uh, in a minute. We're creating the database, putting all that together. We're beginning now to do the survey and to do specific hydraulic and hydrologic studies of those areas that have been identified. And we're looking into, uh, focusing in on the areas that we're dealing with, with the potential to, to look for additional grant funding. And then we'll begin to look into the alternatives. It's maybe a little bit hard to see in white are the watersheds that drain into Cameron County, overlaid on the county boundary and the drainage districts boundaries, uh, the active drainage districts and the communities. This project is zeroing in on the undeveloped areas outside of the major communities. And for the most part, outside of the existing drainage districts, those have done additional studies and have, uh, done a lot of work and, uh, we've helped with some of that. And so, we looked at those areas that were outside of that. We...
Could you, could you hold up for a minute?
And this slide, what we've done is, through the advisory committee and the staff, we went through and, and asked them to identify those areas that had the most problems from Dolly and other floods, but primarily from Dolly. And so, the, this is a depiction showing on that same watershed and district boundary map, those areas that we identified that had major flooding issues with Dolly.
Well, unless I'm misinterpreting your map, I worry that you've left out some areas that are, in my opinion, should be priority.
That we're missing some areas?
Yes. Yes, I think you are.
Well, we're...
I wish I had had more involvement in this.
Well, that's one of the reasons why we're here tonight is to present what we've gotten so far. We're going to be getting some additional public input. We're gonna, we'll ask the county staff to get with your staff.
Well, I'll definitely have a lot of more input.
And if we can get, and we'll, we'll take as much input as we can. We're gonna show you the areas that we're, we're, we're zeroing in on. And again, these were the areas that they identified as...
Who's they? Who is they?
This is the, the advisory committee and the county staff.
And now, how, how did the advisory committee get picked? Cause I had no input on that and I wish I had.
Yeah, we're here just to give you an update on what's going on with this study. It's a, it's a small study. You know, we focused on the drainage district managers and some of the folks in the LaFeria area that have been affected in, in your area. And so, this is the preliminary prioritization that this particular group that was on the previous slide, um, was focusing on.
Well, I just feel like...
And again, these are just areas that have been identified. There's a study that's being done, you know, nothing, concrete has been decided or anything, so...
Well, I just feel like you waste time when you do a study and don't involve the people that will hurt the most. I don't think anyone from, from, from our staff or from, was Louis Ida involved? Was...
Louis Ida's been involved, yes.
Well, I didn't, when he mentioned the names, I didn't hear Louis Ida.
Our engineering staff has been involved and Louis has been involved.
Well, I, you're, you're missing a lot of areas and, and you're saying that this is just, that's why you're bringing it forward, but I definitely, and I don't wanna take time today, but we've been having a lot of meetings, uh, and in fact, we have one scheduled tomorrow, uh, mentioned in the Teocano area and so on.
And they've, they've only been working on this for four months and so this is primarily the reason why we wanted to come before you today, so that you all can get an idea of what they're working on and then provide the input.
Well, I'm sure we can add more people to your advisory committee?
Sure.
Okay, I wanna be on it?
Okay.
One of the, one of these areas that is identified here is the Teocano. Uh, and we'll, we'll show you the list here after the picture, but these were, in general, the areas that, that identified as having the, the biggest flooding issues. And then we specifically prioritize those. You see here again, the same map, but with those areas identified and numbered and, and we, through the advisory committee, asked them to identify those a little bit further, who was involved, um, what was going on. And so, we have through, um, as we, as we began to get into actually looking at the hydrology and hydraulics, these are the descriptions of the areas that, that we're concentrating on. Uh, this is the first seven, there's seven more in the next slide. The North Floodway area, Santa Rosa, Teocano, FM 800, uh, north and south, the area around Baker Potts Road, Haas Lane, uh, the Combs area.
Are those, are those prioritized?
They're not prioritized on this list, no. This is just, this is just the total list.
The numbers 1 through 14 are just arbitrary. That's not the list of priority. It's just, we started numbering...
The, this is just the 14 areas that have been in general identified as the, the ones with the, the largest problem.
First slide shows the highway areas in the northern, uh, in the northern area.
And the, the numbers I didn't relate to this, they're not, that's not prioritized by number, that's just numbering 1 through 14 as we put them together. We'll show you in a minute how we're prioritizing them for the study. This is the chronology of studies that have been done and there, it shows that there have been a number of studies done on the various communities of the county as a whole, portions of the county, the drainage districts, since Hurricane Beulah, uh, between Hurricane Beulah and Hurricane Dolly. And all of these studies have been done in a very similar manner. This again is just the list and they've been done by a number of different firms. And as we get into this project and start looking at these areas that have been identified as having problems, we're looking to see what projects were recommended by those studies, if any of those had affected these areas and whether or not they were completed. Uh, for instance, one of the big studies was the Corps of Engineers and some of those projects have been done, some have not, what's currently underway. And we began to look at why there had been so many different studies and yet the flooding problems still exist. And so, we're looking in, part of our focus is to, uh, change a little bit the way that we look at the flooding issues. We're studying the outlying areas, we're looking at both small and large storms because all the drains are interrelated. They're interrelated into the Rio Grande Floodway system. The IBWC system is a major component, uh, of what happens and the way IBWC operates those floodways is a major component to contributing to the flooding problems, uh, that have been identified. And so, as we get into the study, we're going to be making recommendations for capital improvements, regulations or both. On this slide, I don't, without going into a lot of detail on the technical, I just wanted to show you a little bit, the traditional way of doing these kinds of studies is to look at the peak flow and then to attenuate that peak flow through detention or some other way. And that doesn't seem to be the best way to handle what is happening in Cameron County. If you look at the, the slide, the, the picture to the right, it shows the, the black hydrograph, which is showing the, how the rainfall would, would, would occur, is the traditional way throughout most of Texas and, and Austin and the area that we're from, that that's pretty much the way it happens. You have a really high peak and you get a lot of your volume stormed very quickly. Cameron County though is the red line on the right in that the peaks are much smaller, but the volume of water stays around much longer because of the flat topography, because of the limited infrastructure and the, the, the infrastructure that you do have in the, in the drainage districts and so forth can only move water so fast because of the topography. So, it becomes more of a volumetric, volumetric approach is what we're looking at in terms of, instead of zeroing in on the peak and trying to control that peak, we cannot make the, the channels and the infrastructure big enough to handle those big peaks, but we can look at the volume. And that really is the problem. The water sits around for a long time, it's a lot of water, it sits there and you have to move it out. And rather than providing storage in the streets and, and property that's not made for that, we want to look at ways to change land use, to limit impervious cover, to provide additional storage facilities, maybe mitigation banks and so forth, to deal with the volume of water and look at that more than the peak, although the peak it does come into play. We're gonna be looking more at how that volume... we're gonna be looking more at how that volume and how long the water takes to get out before we can do it. So our approach is to look at the channels, look at providing additional retention or detention in either the reservoirs or some of the wetlands, maybe some water supply storage. We've got some, some ideas from our local partners and from the county staff to be able to help out with some of the water supply issues potentially with the runoff, to capture it and to use it later to, to assist in the water supply issues. So we'll be looking at all of those. There's some obstacles to that, part of that's land availability, part of that is understanding what IBWC is doing. And that's part of what you're meeting tomorrow is to, is to begin to do, is to find out a little bit more about how IBC operates. And some of, some of what happens with the Cameron County flood is you're at the mercy of what happens with IBWC and how they regulate Hidalgo County. And so other studies are going to be looking at that and we'll be coordinating with those other studies. All the drains interrelate, so we're, we're trying to look at those coordinated efforts. For instance, in Cameron County, District 3 and 5, we looked at their channels and some of those channels go either north or south or east or west, depending on which way the rain is. And so we'll be looking at how that can be utilized in these areas as well. In gathering all this information, we're helping the county put it all into a GIS database that it's available for the public and for all of the cities and communities and the county staff to gather the information, to, to get information that's usable and that can be used to, for disaster recovery when that is necessary. Maintain the records and to provide easy access, as I said, for all the, the entities that come into play. This is our schedule, we're about halfway through, we're now into the, the meat of the study in terms of doing our survey, doing our hydrologic and hydraulic analysis and beginning to look at the alternatives for those types of areas that we're looking at. We're gonna focus in on the existing conditions to see what's going on. And the three areas that we're focusing in on with those problem areas are the North Floodway, because a lot of that area drains to the North Floodway and how that North Floodway is operated has a lot to do with how that area can drain. And we're looking at alternatives to using the North Floodway, some other potential ways to connect so that we can get that out. The, there's a, one of the focus areas is the Latina area, which is outside of the drainage districts. And so we're gonna be looking at that and that potential, that has a big potential to do an additional grant. And so that's part of our study as well. And then with some of the other areas, there, there are, there's a few of those areas that are already being undertaken by the drainage districts to correct issues and, and provide drainage to, and some of them, we're gonna be doing some more. And so we're back to that slide again. And the areas along, around Drainage District 3 and around Drainage District 1, we're gonna be working with those people because they're actually, obviously on our advisory committee, excuse me, and trying to address those issues. We, the La Feria area, we're, in this study, we're not going to be looking at La Feria itself and that area that's in red there very much with this study because we've just signed a contract with La Feria. They also got a grant this year from the Texas Water Development Board for a flood protection grant for the community of La Feria. And our area there, when we went after that grant, was all the way to the North Floodway. But what we're gonna concentrate with their study, and we talked with them today to kick that project off, we're gonna be concentrating on La Feria itself, the Teocano and the Arroyo Colorado. And then with the county study, we'll be doing the connections to the North Floodway, looking at alternative ways to maybe operate the gates. Right now, IBWC comes out and closes the gates and so you're at the mercy until they open the gates again. So is there another way to do that? Is there other gate structures that can be utilized and still provide function? Are there other canals potentially that can be connected to help that overflow if those gates do get closed? Or can we run a parallel channel to the floodway that doesn't carry a lot of water but will provide positive drainage in the, in the event that those get closed? And we're also showing here on the slide, we're actually going out and surveying all those connections to the North Floodway, that's one of the things that we've got Brownlee all doing right now, is surveying those, those areas. And so we're focusing in, even though these are individual hotspots, we are looking at the entire watershed, we're not just looking at a specific location, we're looking at that entire area and doing it on a watershed basis. And we're merging that information with the master plans that District 1 has, District 3 has, District 5 has, Harlingen has, we're looking at the areas outside, the areas that they drain to and how they drain it. The La Feria study that's getting underway, and so the county study is gonna concentrate on those other areas outside of those. And as I said, focus in on the, the Latina area, kind of coordinating with the districts to take care of these other little hotspots and other areas that lie just outside the districts. And District 3 is already addressing three of those, I believe, right? Is that correct? And then working with Sonny in La Feria and his study so that we get a coordinated effort between the two studies.
Where are you connecting the dots to Hidalgo County and their, and their drainage? Or is that part of your scope here?
It's really, nah, the only, the only place where Hidalgo County comes in is trying to find out from them and, and IBWC how much water they're putting through both the Arroyo and the, and the North Floodway so that we can use that information in capacity analysis to look at what we can, how that impacts the drainage from Cameron County. Some of that information is available, some of it is not. IBWC primarily has models for draining the Rio Grande, but they really don't have much information on the local drainage. And so it's, we're gonna, we're gonna be coordinating with Hidalgo County, the new study that's getting ready to take place, that's gonna have an impact on that, so whoever the consultant is with that, hopefully us, but never know.
But I guess what I'm asking is-
We're gonna coordinate with that study as well.
Yeah, are you, are you gonna be coordinating with whomever it is on, in Hidalgo County? Because their water flows this way-
Yes.
And that was part of the problem that we had in some of our low-lying areas, a lot of the water was flowing, you know, from, from, from the west, this way through Cameron and, and, and southern Willacy County. So I guess, this is great to do, it's a good, it's a good beginning point, but it's, and I know it's a work in process, but you've gotta connect that dot to Hidalgo County.
Exactly. And we understand that Judge-
Okay.
And that's, that's exactly what we're trying to do. We are going to, part of that's been hung up because of what's going on with the three county study and how that's gonna impact it. You know, with the, with the money that, that's here, we're, we're trying to zero in on the local issues and get enough information on that floodway that we can say, here's what's gonna happen. Some of that may not be available and if it's not, it's beyond the scope of this study to do some of that, we've just gotta rely on the information that they give us or coordinate with the new study, which will be looking primarily at that. That's gonna be, I think, a big focus on that three county study that's getting ready to take place. Because that's really where it all comes down, is that, you know, if your, your drainage gets stuck with their drainage and depending on how IBWC operates or allows those drainage structures to operate, you're kind of at that, the mercy of both of those. And so we want to make sure that we understand that and that you understand that and that we work with them to get a coordinated effort. We think there's a better way to do it from what we've found so far. Now, we may not have all the information yet, but what we've been able to get so far, we, we know that there's a lot of coordination that's lacking that, that needs to happen. And Harlingen is already putting an effort together, the meeting y'all are having tomorrow with IBWC and so forth, all of that is, we're beginning to get all that and it's all kinda going on at the same time. And we're gonna try and tap into that as much as possible.
You mentioned the fact that there's been a lot of studies done and it's amazing, I know Mr. Penney is in the audience, and this reminds me of when we were working with dropout prevention and we studied those poor kids to death and never did anything with them. This kind of reminds me of that, we've got so many studies going and there've been so many studies in the past. I hope I get to, to see the day when we get answers. And, and when we get to that point, that's when we have succeeded. I, I could appreciate the work you've done, but I can tell you right now, I'm disappointed, David. I hadn't gotten any information on this. Our, our area was the worst flooded.
Yes ma'am.
And I want you to go back and tell me what this committee has prioritized. I want you to list it for me, not on the map, but articulate the areas you have prioritized already.
The area that has been prioritized is the North Floodway, the area that drains North Floodway, the north side of Harlingen, the La Feria area, that northeast end of the county is the number one, from the, from the advisory committee, that's the area where all the problems occurred with Dolly, the primary problems. The other ones you see on the map in the middle are those areas that had isolated problems. And those are priorities too because they're, they're, they're issues. But the main area, the area with the most problems are those areas between the Arroyo Colorado and the North Floodway that drain primarily to the North Floodway. That's my understanding was the, was the number one problem in the way that the gates were shut off after the flood came through here and then hit Hidalgo County and they came back and shut the gates, then the water sat. And so we're looking at that area is the main area that we're gonna concentrate on is that North Floodway area. And the La Feria study is going to concentrate on that, on La Feria and the area between La Feria and Harlingen. And primarily looking at that going south to the Arroyo and then as they go north, then the county study will pick that up as it approaches the North Floodway. So the number one priority is that northeast side of the county. Obviously, the eastern side is, has a lot of open land and low population, but these were, these were all the population areas that they identified outside of the, primarily outside the districts. There was flooding that occurred in San Bonito and Harlingen and so forth that has, has continued to occur. We've addressed some of those issues and those are being fixed by the drainage districts. We did a study last year in District 5 and the year before in District 3. And those are being, or 3 and 5, I got that reversed, but those are being addressed now by those districts and providing additional facilities there. And then as I said, District 3 has already moved forward with these areas that are on the, the boundary of District 3. Several of these areas, they're already extending channels and, and waterworks to, to approach those and to provide some positive drainage for those areas.
Now, have you involved anyone from Tech Dot on this?
We haven't invited Tech Dot to the meeting.
Cause I think that's critical.
Yes.
It's extremely critical. I, I just had a very good conversation yesterday with a Tech Dot representative and, and, and I think that we have to coordinate all this, they've got to be involved.
Yes ma'am.
When is your next meeting?
We haven't said that, I don't think.
The next advisory committing, meeting will probably be in about three to four weeks. We haven't said it yet. But on the schedule, it's, it's about every six weeks.
So you just had one?
We just had one a couple of weeks ago, yes.
And where do you hold the meetings?
At the-
At the annex?
City complex in, in-
Oh, the annex?
Yes, the annex.
Okay.
Well, there's people that can be in that committee that aren't necessarily housed at that annex. From, from the list you gave me, it seems like it was sort of an accommodating situation that most of the people you have on that have their offices there. Other people can travel there to be on that committee.
That concludes our presentation. I want to thank you and we'll, we'll continue to work with the county and with the county staff as you, as you direct us to work and those are the areas that we're prioritizing. Thank you.
You know, anybody else that, that, not only Commissioner Tamayo, but anybody else from the court that wishes, I'll keep it short of a quorum obviously, but anybody else who wishes to sit on that committee, just let, let David know. But just make sure that, you know, we don't get stuck with having three people show up, you know, inadvertently, okay?
Judge, I thought I'd mentioned that at the last Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council meeting, there's more stimulus money coming down, ORCA money. And if they can get, a lot, 50% of it was set aside for housing. And they're trying to get that changed to make more money available for projects such as this. And one of the things that was discussed was the possibility of, instead of breaking all the money up by all the small entities-
Do one big project.
Doing one big project that would alleviate not only the Hidallo County, Cameron County and Willacy County.
That's great.
Which I think is a good idea.
What they'll need to do is, similar to what you've done, y'all have compiled a lot of these studies that have been done with your study and they'll need to be compiling your study with those studies.
Right, everything will have to go together. Commissioner, to follow up on what you just said, I've been, the last, in fact, I drove down here from Galveston this morning. I've been at the Texas Flood Management Association and the Texas Department of Rural Affairs was there and made a presentation about what you just, what just mentioned, that they had $1.5 billion to give out when they did the original ORCA list. They have now, they're now working on the application and expect to get it any day now for about another $1.3 million. They're, they're gonna have $3 billion totally, total. And yes, half of that is earmarked for housing, but that means that there's another round of grant funding that will be available almost immediately. And the other issue that brought up related to that, related to the grant funding is that the HMGP grants that are available through the Department of Public Safety with the Hazard Mitigation Planning, that is, as projects, as we do studies like this and identify projects and those get put in your hazard mitigation plan, then they're available for that funding as well. And they have additional funding for those also right now, that they're still accepting applications for.
And speaking to the director of the Lower Rio Grande Development Council, he, he mentioned that and again, but we're, we're sort of kind of at the mercy of Hidalgo County. You know, they got more seats, they got more votes, I think that's what's frustrated some members of the commission that, that, that were on that board for a long time. So we're gonna have to convince them that, that, you know, since we speak and when I talk to JD, you know, we speak as a region and we get to those areas, all of a sudden they know that's, you know, it comes over here. So we just need to convey to them strongly how we need a regional drainage plan. And part of that's gonna, it's gonna take millions of dollars to implement this project, you know, to take it to its fruition. I mean, talking a whole lot of money.
Right.
But, but I would just continue to, to converse with them and commissioners, as you visit with them, just start working on those votes for Hidalgo County and, and try to get, just to come up to something that, that's reasonable. When I met with Ken the other day, I said, look, I don't, we don't wanna be greedy, we just wanna be, you know, we wanna be treated fairly. And, and at times, we're not, so I appreciate your, your report. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge the report?
Some.
By Commissioner Benavides?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Consent items 3A through double R, any items anybody wishes to take out and discuss separately? I'd like to take out item I and item O.
Judge, can we table item D?
B as in boy?
D as in David.
D as in David? Okay. Anything else?
What were the ones you were pulling out Judge?
I'd like to discuss separately item I and item O. Hearing none and sensing none? There's more? I'm sorry? D is okay?
D is okay. But we don't need- Apparently D is okay.
Okay, that's fine.
No.
Just leave D in there. If not, do I hear a motion to approve all consent items with the exception of item I and O that will be discussed separately?
Some.
Led by Commissioner Tamayo, led by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item I, consideration possible approval of agreement with Valley Baptist to fund two positions for transporting mental health patients to mental facilities. We've been working on this, Robert, you wanna come up and start? Four months. And because of the issues we've had trying to get all the constables to, to cooperate and participate in the mental health transport, Robert has been the, Robert Lopez, our constable from the Rio Grande area, has been, you know, instrumental in, in, in working through this. And so I've shared his frustration via many a call. So when we're going through the budget process, you know, we had to eliminate the, the warrant officer position. And I thought about, you know, if we can, and that's subject to legal, but if we can, utilize these two warrant officers and make them full-time mental health transport officers. The money, the money came from, always coming from Valley Baptist. I approached Valley Baptist, see if they'd be willing to do something like this. And after much discussions between their legal counsel and, and our legal counsel, they'll be, particularly who was instrumental in- was particularly who was instrumental in drafting the contract, Valley Baptist has agreed to fund these two officers or these two employees to do nothing but mental health transport. They're going to cover, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, they're going to cover basically not only their compensation, all the benefits, then we talk about also the incident caused gasoline vehicle-related stuff. So it's almost a turnkey project and I want to thank Valley Baptist, assuming this passes, Valley Baptist for their support because without them, you know, we couldn't have done this and Robert would still be struggling. So Robert, I'll open the door for you and tell us what's going on.
Okay. Thank you, Judge, commissioners. We met with Valley Baptist, Manny Vella, in our legal department. This started back in, I'm going to speak to County Judge Coscos, and I'd like to thank him for his help on this. We mentioned it to him one time and he was able to set up meetings with us, contact legal and had a meeting with Valley Baptist. And he pushed it very hard and I really do want to appreciate the judge for all his help on it. But basically, the hospital wants to fund two officers and they'll be on call from, well, they'll be working from nine to five and the other one will overlap from three to 11. And they're going to be doing all the mental transports for Valley Baptist. Now, the question has arisen about the other hospitals and their priority will be Valley Baptist, you know, and when we finish their work, then we can do the other hospitals. But our priority will be Valley Baptist and these two officers will do nothing but do a mental transports. And I believe maybe once or twice a month will be a transport to San Antonio that we'll have to make. Other than that, it'll be just basically from here to Edinburgh and back.
So when they're not doing mental health transport, like if they, I mean, where will they be housed?
If commissioners approve it, they will be housed out of my department.
Because you're going to basically supervising...
Yes, sir.
This section, which I think is a great idea.
If y'all allow it, I like to run the department. That program and when they're not doing mental transport, they will be stationed at our. And my idea was to, if they have a slow day, was to concentrate on actually what they were doing before, the warrants.
Right.
The traffic warrants out of the JP office.
Good idea.
So if they need them in Brownsville, wherever they need them, they have a slow day, they can still respond to Valley Baptist from whatever location they're at.
Because they're just, they're serving, basically.
Yeah. We'll generate a report on the mental, I mean, on the warrants and the mentals to Commissioners' Court.
I know that you've struggled with this for quite some time. I tell you, you have, you might want to mention the, well, yeah, you know what, mention the constables that were participating because you have to applaud the ones that were willing to participate in the process, but it just wasn't enough. And we were really taxing you guys, you know, a lot. So you don't want to give credit where credit is due.
So it is, merci, or ratio, some of them. Us four really pushed it hard.
You four.
But there was a couple of that we struggled with, but you know, we're all on the same team.
We're somewhere on the bench, but it's okay.
Well, Robert, I can...
Someone I feel, but we're there.
I congratulate you for taking the lead on this. And I know that it's been hard. I'm glad to see that there weren't officers and I will certainly make a motion in a minute because they're good people, they've done a good job. And I think that you will be coordinating with, to keep them assigned to whenever they're not doing the transports.
Yes, when, like I said, when they have a slow day, we'll just assign them to the traffic warrant division.
Robert, I also appreciate you stepping up and tackling on this added burden, but it is something that's desperately needed. My understanding is that not only just this, and I know we're talking about transporting, but that also includes the issue of taking the paperwork to JP's and judges for signatures, getting it back to the hospitals so that the transport can take place. And obviously, they've got training that can be done because they're going to need to be trained, as you well know. I think you've already been trained in it.
Yes, I've been trained. Valley Baptist has, they will be training, training those two officers. And the officer will be a liaison between the hospital and the JP's, take the paperwork back and forth. And when the law allows it, we'll do a Section 26 at that moment.
There we go.
Appreciate it.
Motion for approval?
It's another good partnership, yes, definitely. I'm glad about this.
Can I ask you a question? You said that Valley Baptist is going to be paying for the gas and all that. We're going to be providing the vehicle?
Just the vehicle and they'll pay the fuel and the salaries, the furniture.
The same vehicles that they had.
The only thing I added, I talked to Delby, was to see if they could provide a cell phone. I talked to Rosie Colossus today. She's going to share with Manny Vella, see, just so they could, like on weekends and stuff like that, when they'll be on call, so they can have communication straight to the officer.
Valley Baptist should be able to provide a couple of cell phones. You've got to squeeze them.
Yes.
That's great.
All right.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you all. That was a move by Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Judge.
You can make your meaning. Thank you. Item O, consideration approval of new independent procedures. Mike Forbes. Mike, I read them, but I just want you to explain briefly to the court what you're doing and why you're doing it.
Every three or four months, and I try not to bombard the court with too many procedures at one time, but as I find procedures out there that help to fine-tune and make improvements overall countywide to tighten operations, to get better control over different areas and aspects of procurement. As I find these, I'm batching them, running them by the county administrator, the auditor, and legal. We look at them carefully, scrutinize them. Some of these are ideas coming from other counties, but it's an effort to try and just tighten up our operations and be sure that everyone out there doing or conducting different aspects of procurement understand what the county's rules and procedures are. And you'll see more coming as we continue on with this project. But it's a never-ending project. There's always room for improvement and these procedures allow us to address issues that have not been addressed in the past.
Outline some of the procedures more specifically.
For example, purchases from employees. This procedure basically identifies what the county's policy recommended that a court for approval would be, which, for example, in this one, it says that it shall be the policy of the county not to purchase any goods or services from an employee without prior consent of Commissioners' Court. Return for credit, basically a layout in a one-page policy, all the steps involved and what the department should do when they're looking to return items. For whatever reason, maybe they've purchased too many items and don't need that many, but need to return a few back to the vendor. This lays out the procedures to what steps they should follow when returning items back for credit. Returnable materials, basically the same. Returnable materials, we're looking at items that need to be returned for what other purposes, to provide a procedure for returning materials to suppliers and how they should actually make that effort. Rush purchases, we have that laid out. Soul source, this is basically letting departments know that if there's an attempt to make a soul source procurement that exceeds $15,000, that item has to be placed on the agenda and the court has to approve it before a purchase order can be issued.
Mike, if you go back to the first one, you talked about purchasing from employees. Are you going to extend that out using that nepotism graph or whatever? Because right there, you're only talking about employees, but you're not addressing employees, spouses, or family members. How are you going to address that or are you going to go ahead and expand it?
Right. I have another procedure that follows this, which will be coming to the court, which is, and will attach the nepotism charge that we use in all of our bids and proposals, which basically identifies immediate kin as well as other relationships. And that is a separate procedure, all the, non-employee, but family-related or nepotism-related type purchases.
Now, the way you're going to disseminate this is you're going to, you're going to email this policy to all department heads and/or elected officials, obviously? Everybody, right?
Exactly. What we're doing with all these procedures, Commissioner, is they're all on our website and we're sending emails, like, once these get approved by tomorrow or Monday, we'll send an email to all the departments, letting them know that these procedures have, are an updated list, approved by Commissioners' Court. They're on the website. The website link will be attached for everyone to see and they should be familiar with these procedures. In addition, what we've done is we've fine-tuned our requisition so that when anyone makes a request, close to the signature, there's a comment that says, "This request is in compliance with current county internal procedures."
Mike, I'd like to take, I'd like, if the court would agree, to take it a step further. As you send this information out, I think that you need to send some kind of an acknowledgement form.
Okay.
And that acknowledgement form should be, "I have read the policies and I, you know, I concur," and they ship it back to you.
Perfect.
That way, you've got it in your file and we need to get that from every single elected official, department head, anyone that does procurement. I don't know how far down the, you know, the pecking order you want to go, but you're going to have to make that call, but I want you to get something in writing back. I don't want somebody to say, "Well, I didn't know, I never saw it, never read it, I'm not familiar with it." So there, I want them to acknowledge that they're familiar with these new rules. I think that that should be a protocol.
Okay.
On every time you send out, that you get some kind of written response back.
Okay.
If someone is not opening up their email box, then you hand-deliver it.
Okay.
Okay?
For sure.
That way, you'll have the documentation.
Right. What we could do is we have a book, a signature book, for everyone approved to sign and request based on acquisitions. We can add that to the book. I think we also have in there an ethics form that all employees involved in procurement have to sign. So we can add to that these as a separate section.
Well, I think every time you send an addendum to a policy or something, I mean, you got, I would think that you'd want to have some kind of acknowledgement...
Okay.
From whoever's receiving it, just so you know that your messages are not being unheard.
Okay.
Okay? But you did a good job. I read them and they were...
Yeah, I was very impressed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lots of work put into it.
Okay. Your motion to approve.
Some of.
By Commissioner Tamayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item 4A, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules.
Judge, commissioners, you should have received the budget amendments and attached salary schedules as well. The budget amendments are pretty general. They're just moving current funds to meet current requirements that they're, that they are needing. On page one, there is supplemental funding that was received on the Flight Science Task Force, so you'll show an increase there of $55,000 to, or rather, setting up the budget to acknowledge the $55,000 award, which was on an existing award document from the prior years. And page two of the budget amendments and page three are just general budget amendments. On page three, you'll see $11,000 being moved from the Board of Children in the Juvenile Department and that is being moved to contractual and that is to give the Juvenile Department to pay the fee for them to access the software system that allows them to generate the savings on medical claims for the, for the children that they have in their services. And the last one is setting up funding, not setting up funding, moving funds from the El Don Chipo Park, moving all the contractual and moving $10,000 into professional services.
Okay, you recommend the approval?
I do. The attached salary schedules as well are just salary schedules that had not been approved yet, so we're presenting them for approval as well.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
By Commissioner Tamayo, saying by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Approval of county claims.
I have warrants number 226970 through 227316 for your approval. I also have payroll-related claims, which are warrants number 227320 through 2274527, except for warrant number 227445, which needs to be voided. And I don't believe that is marked as being voided in your documents. I also have warrants number 227453 through 227502 for your approval. And I am also adding payments that are done through direct wire transfer. And those are three wire transfers for $180,967.50. And those are for the, for our medical providers as well. I also have payroll check register, check date October the 16th. And that total is for $1,590,232.42. There is a check number in there that is to be voided, which is check number 68193, that is to be voided. And you should have in front of you a replacement check and that check number is 394865. And that is issued for $728.78 for your approval.
You recommend the approval?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Some of.
By Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Please note my abstention on the two affidavits that I provided. Item C, approve...
I have one that I'm providing.
Please note Commissioner Tamayo's abstention on the affidavit that she's provided as well. Approval of minutes for September the 17th, 2009 special meeting and September the 17th, 2009 regular meeting. The court members have an opportunity to read the minutes. Are they ready for approval?
Move to approve.
With by Commissioner Benavides and by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item F, consideration and authorization of a public hearing to allow public input concerning the Cameron County Stormwater Management Plan or implementation procedures. Do I hear a motion to open public hearing?
Some of.
By Commissioner Tamayo, saying by Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Ernesto? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. This is a public hearing and it just gives opportunity to the public if they have any comments in our stormwater plan. We're closing our second year, starting our third year. And so this is just for the record, we had to do it once a year under our stormwater plan, management plan. And it just gives opportunity for public comment.
But how's the public know what the plan is?
It's on the website. We put it on the website. It's in the county website.
So if they look at it, they're familiar with it, they don't, they don't? Do you have any hard copies available?
We do have hard copies. There should be here one in the administrative office of the stormwater plan. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
It's one available here, our notice of intent and application and that sort of thing. But if somebody wants copies, we have them available, but it should, it's posted in the website. If you go to Cameron County Transportation Department under the Engineering Division, it has some bullet points in there where you can click on to the stormwater plan and some other...
That's assuming people can log on to...
Yes, it's available.
Yeah, assuming people can log on to our website.
It's available.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is anybody present here that would like to make comment on the plan? Now is the time to do it.
If not, recommend a closed hearing, public hearing.
Okay, do I hear a motion to close public hearing? Make a move?
Yes.
Okay. By Commissioner Wood and by Commissioner Tamayo, to close public hearing, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Discussion, item G, discussion of possible action on the results from the Andy Bowie Park land use ad hoc committee.
Judge, commissioners, at the beginning of the year, y'all had requested that we establish a committee, ad hoc committee for, to evaluate the use of Andy Bowie Park. Since then, we've had several committee meetings and discussed several ideas. And the committee members are here, we have three. They would like to make a presentation to the court.
Does the committee, who is the chair of the committee?
I don't think we had...
There was no chair? Who was the sofa? Never mind. Who's going to make the recommend, who's going to speak off, everybody or just?
The sofa.
Okay. All right, just in case you had a spokesperson. Okay. Yeah, all right.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. First of all, we want to thank you all for having the foresight to appoint an ad hoc committee to take a look at Andy Bowie Park. We certainly have taken that task to heart. We believe very strongly that geographically it may lie in Commissioner Benavides's backyard, but it truly is a treasure, not only of our county, but certainly of our state and quite frankly, of our nation, because we have people from throughout the country and from throughout other places in the world that come down here to visit us. Our focus has been on Andy Bowie Park, and let me just applaud you first of all, because we've been watching and listening to you this afternoon. Anybody that thinks that all the county Commissioners Court does is bridges and roads needs to come or needs to listen to your televised program, because we certainly know that there is a wide variety of programs that you not only institute, but that you coordinate with other governmental entities, and that's certainly to the benefits of all the citizens of our county. We are focusing on one of the true treasures of Texas, and that's Andy Bowie Park. Our job has been to look, to study, to evaluate, to talk to various stakeholders of Andy Bowie Park, not only residents, but people who come and visit there. I think that you'll find with our very short presentation, because we're not going to give you any solutions. We're not going to tell you what it is that we believe should actually be done at this point. We actually are going to ask you to partner with us and with the citizens of Cameron County, because we believe that Andy Bowie Park is certainly a treasure that we need not only to preserve, but certainly to protect and to defend as we go, not only until the next decade, but for our children and for our grandchildren. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my other committee member, Mary Helen Fuentes. I also have Rob Nixon, who's a committee member. I want to also note that Mary Wood Ferguson was a very active participant in this committee. Unfortunately, she had to resign because she works with a law firm that apparently is, may end up having a conflict that she just found out, that was just arose this past week. But also on our committee has been Glenn McKinley from the island as well. So, Mary Helen?
Hi. Thank you for your time. My portion of this presentation is letting you know what parameters we came up with and what resources we used. The parameters for public hearings, of course, are description of Andy Bowie Park land, which you have a photo of in front of you. The park is a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-five acres. Seventy-two acres constitute the south flats on the bayside. Forty-two acres, there are forty-two acres of completed or pending high-impact development in existence. That leaves us a hundred-and-eleven acres for public beach park use. The list of parameters that we have is the uses for existing public park land should, number one, maximize public access. Number two, be of minimal environmental impact. Number three, maximize care and protection of the natural dune line. Number four, highlight recreational and educational uses. Number five, involve litter control strategies. The ultimate design and use should be of high quality and well-administered and maintained. We want to be proud of the condition in which we keep our county beach parks. Resources for this committee's recommendations are, among the resources are, the existing deeds of our county beach park land, which specify that the land is to be used for public park purposes, the Texas Open Beaches Act, and the Coastal Barrier Improvement Act of 1990. Andy Bowie Park falls under the category of an otherwise protected area in the Coastal Barrier Improvement Act, and as such, any development built on this land is prohibited from receiving federal flood insurance. Another consideration that we've taken into account in choosing the parameters listed above is the possibility of a second causeway from the mainland to the island and the heavy development that will occur on the north end of South Padre. The scheduling and locations for the recommended three public hearings are evening and/or weekend times, a date which will allow for the input of our winter Texans, and locations which will draw a large number of participants. Thank you.
How's it going? Thank you guys, by the way, for the opportunity to do this. We don't have any solutions to present to you guys tonight. We want to move forward with the public hearing if I decide to do that tonight. We do have a basis of four ideas we came up with to start with, to act as like a foundation to run the public hearings on, for the public to expand upon if they'd like to. We wanted a nature trail made up of raised boardwalks that would allow visitors, such as boaters, hikers, and generally curious people to roam the large dunes within the park without disturbing the valuable vegetated dunes that would protect development and the road to the west. A for-profit tent camping area that would provide for a safe and enjoyable area for visitors to be able to camp overnight. A dedicated launch and landing area within the south flats for sail and kiteboarders, as well as sailboats to utilize. A for-profit fishing pier on the little Guadalupe side to enhance fishing opportunities for the area, and allow for the establishment of a small vending kiosk that would cater to these new attractions and the general public. We wanted to come up with a list that would keep the natural aesthetic, but still give the county opportunity to make money off the land.
Would you repeat the fourth, the third one?
Sure. Dedicated launch and landing area within the south flats for sail and kiteboarders, as well as sailboats. They're going to use it for that right now, but we'd like to keep it protected for them in the future, so. But with that, tonight, we're just asking for your guys' approval to move forward with the public hearings and your participation as well, so.
Thank you, we do, Rob and Mary Helen.
Mr. Nixon.
Yes, ma'am.
The last one, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the last one?
The last use?
Yeah, here, it was the pier.
Allowing the establishing small vending kiosks to cater to those new attractions.
These are possibilities that have arisen because of the current uses that are being out there and what stakeholders in these different areas. We've attended one of the Cameron County Parks meetings, and they're very interested in making sure that there's a, as you are, I mean, when you're talking about the drainage plan that we're talking, I think that's very important for us to look at this in a larger scheme and make sure that not only the Commissioners Court, but, you know, all of those different kinds of bodies that have a voice in the development of the park come to the table. And that's why we think it's really important that we have public meetings, and we did have a meeting with Judge in which we asked legal about the possibility of having joint meeting with the Commissioners Court and perhaps City Commission and the Parks Board and different ones as a kickoff on the island to be able to gather some momentum for this input. And apparently, there's not a problem with the Commissioners Court meeting somewhere else other than in Brownsville, so that won't be an impediment. But I think it's incredibly important for us to get input from the public, to be able to hear, and because we all have ideas, but I think we need to step back and listen to what the various people who actually go out there and use it, and I truly believe that each of you have gone out there, but when you go out there and you just kind of walk the property of Andy Bowie Park, you get the sense of the pristine nature that it is and the beauty that it holds, and why it really attracts as many people as it does, and why we're able to increase, hopefully, unlike our bridges, increase our admission to these parks and to be able to generate the kinds of revenues that we need to be able to provide the services, not only that Andy Bowie and Isla Blanca Park provide, but that we provide for all the other parks in our county as well.
Reverend, as you know, when we started this whole process, and I want to thank all three and the rest of the county, Mary Wood also for serving on this committee, and I think the purpose of forming this committee was to avoid the debacle that this court had experienced.
I don't want to bring that up.
I'll bring it up, because I think it was critical. But what that issue happened to do was kind of, you know, it woke a sleeping giant, so to speak, and the purpose of this committee was not only for this commission to convey the message to the public and to you all, but it is different. It's transparent, and we wanted you involved from the very beginning. And I think what I told all of y'all, whatever the committee recommends, that's what I'm going to support. Unless it's something like, you know, very, very wild. But I think we need to.
Too old to be wild.
Yeah. But we do need to partner, and I think that's one of the issues that we've been supporting for the last couple of years, is openness and working with partners and getting you all involved and assist you with this. Not that we're going to do, I mean, you don't have to do what you suggest, I'm just saying that I, as one, would take the committee's recommendation, you know, at the way that I would support, or else why even have y'all waste your time?
And actually, that was one of the things that, as a committee, we felt that we were too small to really reflect a larger position that may be out there, and that's why we think it's important that not only us that are your ad hoc committee, but you as the Commissioners and Commissioners Court have the opportunity to listen to people that do have and who are very passionate about.
So you're referring to a public hearing?
Yes.
But I think this is a good beginning. I think that at the public hearing, this will start the discussion. I mean, you've got some ideas, which I appreciate.
Precisely.
And that's, and I always feel that if somebody comes to us with a problem, because this had been a problem in the past, that you have a solution. And I know at the very beginning, you said, "We don't have the answers." Well, to me, you've done a pretty good job of coming up with some answers that can help us, you know?
I think we have some direction.
Some direction, yeah.
Exactly.
And I think that will facilitate the public hearing.
And before I leave, I really want to thank Javier for providing guidance.
He's a good job.
And a place to meet and kind of giving us an orientation as to the parameters of the park and where it is and how it lies and what part really is under development, which isn't, and what really continues to be a public access to the citizens of our county.
The one thing that I don't want to go unnoticed, and I also want to thank Javier for doing that, but I think one of, maybe it was Rob or Mary Helen, one of y'all brought the issue up about, you know, one of the meetings, you know, what's going on, so we decided to, you know, post all these meetings on our website, when they're going to occur, so that not only you all know, but the public knows. And I think, I'm hoping that that is a positive move, and even aware, because even your meetings should not be closed. They should be open to everyone, anyone that wants to attend and participate. The public hearings, you know, I would like for you to work with Javier in terms of setting them up. Now, we need to know ahead of time, because the way that we can meet outside of the county seat is by posting it on a meeting and saying, "Our next meeting will be at," you know, wherever.
Well, I think from the input that we were getting, and incidentally, I attended one of the meetings of the south, what is it, South Padre Property Owners Meeting last week, and they have a great deal of passion about Andy Bowie Park as well. So you've got a lot of enthusiasm building up right now, and it'd be a good thing, but I think the other stakeholders that are not going to be here until December or January will be some of our senior citizens and our winter visitors, who quite frankly pay, and I was not aware of this, I mean, we charge a nice fee to put your RV vehicles on Isla Blanca, and unbeknownst to me, it's actually less than some of the other parks actually charge. So those are things that we're starting to find out, and I think it's important for us to be informed as well. But I think that in working with Javier, I think we want to make sure that we plan our initial meeting, which we believe will be on South Padre Island, to be able to afford the maximum amount of opportunity for people to participate. I think we would probably have one here and perhaps one in San Benito, at our county complex in San Benito, which would be able to draw people from La Feria Santa Rosa.
Reverend, you all can decide how many public hearings you want to have. You want to have as many as you want?
No, Judge, we don't.
Well, I want you to understand what it's like. But I think it's important, I think that the, you know, you all work it out when you want, if you want to wait till December or January, that's fine. There's really no fast timetable here. I think we need to just take our time and.
Well, it'll be October, Judge. I mean, we're almost at the end of COVID, so. It's going to be on us pretty quickly, and I think January, sometime in the mid-January area.
Y'all work it out. Y'all work it out and just work with Javier and me. Make sure Javier, when you come up with a date for the public hearing, that you check with all members of the court, make sure that they're going to be available for that day. Once we get that consensus, then what you can do is place that item on the agenda so we can approve it to meet at that following day. And assuming at that point, you can formally extend the invitation to the city of South Padre and everybody else that needs to be the PI, and everybody else.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. Reverend, I think we all appreciate the work y'all have done and certainly the presentations this evening. Do you have these presentation material in some format that we can access, either written or electronic?
We.
Verbatim, not?
Yeah. It's under record.
Okay, it's verbatim?
We did.
Okay. We'd like to get some.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Still move.
By Commissioner Thamayo, sent by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item H, Consideration of Possible Action on a Beachfront Construction Certificate and Dune Protection Permit for Larry Mark Polsky for the development of Seabreeze Estates. Javier, is this what, is this something that we need to wait for GLO or something?
Yes. The chairman from the Dune Protection Committee sent out an email. He wanted to table it.
Okay. That's what I thought. Do I hear a motion to table? By Commissioner Thamayo. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item I, Consideration of Possible Action Regarding Reimbursements from FEMA. Robert?
Judge Commissioners?
I will tell you, Mr. Colley is going to be here on the 10th, and we're going to visit with him at that moment. He's coming in on some other stuff, and it's going to be great for Cameron County, but I want to mention this to him as well.
Absolutely.
The fact that we haven't gotten the.
Additional. We're still waiting for some audits to take place.
So we're in the same place we were last week.
Correct.
Basically, yeah.
Okay. And since the last time I met with the RLO and a member of the GDM audit staff and the recovery staff, we've actually taken the opportunity to call our neighboring county and different cities between, you know, us and them, and unfortunately, everybody is in the same position, so I think.
Okay.
A visit with Mr. Colley would be definitely needed.
Well, he'll be here on the 10th, and then he'll just be here for a little bit, but I'm going to try to, we're going to string him down for a little bit and just kind of.
10th of November? November 10th?
Yes. Well, he's not coming in for a formal meeting. He's coming to talk about some other stuff.
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, but I'm going to.
And that's when you'll be able to.
I'm going to bring some stuff up to him. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge Robert's blistering report? By Commissioner Thamayo, sent by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
By Commissioner Benavides, sent by Commissioner Thamayo.